I would like to call the regular planning commission meeting of Tuesday, May 27th, to order. We do the flag salute. Commissioner Utteg.
(inaudible).
Would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Flowers.
Present.
Commissioner Kinderwater.
Present.
Commissioner Al Rawi.
Present.
Commissioner Yusik.
Present.
Commissioner Van Duker.
Present.
Chair Sheeler.
Here.
Thank you.
We have, it's now time for the consent agenda. We have one item on the consent, which is the minutes from April 22nd meeting. Does anyone from the commission or the public wish to pull the consent item from discussion? Do I have a motion and a second for the, to accept, to approve the consented calendar?
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
A second.
Commissioner Van Duker made the motion and Commissioner Flowers seconded.
Thank you.
Do you call the roll?
Yeah, you, we don't need to call roll, you can just ask.
I'm just following my rules.
Hey, I, hey.
It says right here.
I know, I know.
Public comment. Under Government Code, Section 5495, 4.3, members of the audience may address the commission on any item within the jurisdiction of the commission or on any agenda item. Those wishing to speak on non-agenda items will be called upon at the beginning of the meeting. Those wishing to speak for or against an agenda item will be called upon the presentation by the plan, by the City Planning Commission Division and the applicant for that agenda So the next item is public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on any item not on the agenda?
We have no comments.
Thank you. Do I have to close it? Technically. All right. All right. Tonight on the regular calendar is the Capital Improvement, CIP, presentation by Regina Cave.
Commission, why Regina's getting set up there, for those that have not met, our director, Regina Cave, she's the director of our General Services Division that oversees our public works, facilities, and all kinds of important stuff in the city. And her responsibility, one of them is the Capital Improvement Program. And so as part of your role is to review the CIP and adopt it, or not adopt it, but can find that it's conforming to our general plan. So those who have not met her, introduce Regina Cave for this presentation.
Thank you, Allison. Good evening, everyone. Again, Regina Cave, General Services Director. My pleasure to present the CIP to you this year. I think some of you have met me before and I've presented to you in previous years. We do this every two years now instead of every year. But I think I've been doing this for probably about 20, 25 years now, so hopefully you've passed my path at one time. So the Capital Improvement Program, state law requires the city to prepare a CIP. It covers a five-year planning horizon and programs funds for two fiscal years, which is consistent with the city's two-year budget cycle. The CIP does not allocate funds, however, we use it as a planning tool to utilize revenue projections as well as outlining secured funds where applicable, such as if we have grants that cover multiple fiscal years. Prior to inclusion in the CIP, we review projects for consistency with the city's general plan, including helping to meet the city's goals of greenhouse gas reduction. So looking ahead at five years, this is what we have planned for the next five years. We have 18 projects scheduled within the two-year fiscal year horizon. We have 31.6 million for '25-'26 and 21.2 million for '26-'27. To say GSD staff will be busy is an understatement. And our two-year look ahead again, 18 projects ranging from signal operation enhancements, while some things are, you could look at them through a maintenance vision, a lot of this is because of the dollar value, we consider them capital. We have a lot of complete streets projects, some stormwater improvements, facilities and IT enhancements. And so our first is our Advanced Traffic Management System. This program supports, and just so you know, I'm not going to go through every single project that we have in the CIP, just really touching on some of the key ones. This program supports operational enhancements to our citywide traffic management system. If you've ever come through GSD, or if you haven't, we invite you to schedule some time and you can come by into our city engineer's office and she will show you the Traffic Operations Center where she has a screen set up to see all of our signalized intersections where we currently have cameras. But we still have a lot of intersections that do not have cameras and it would be ideal for the entire city to be on the network so we can actively manage the traffic flow in real time and be able to make adjustments when we need to. The project for this program is derived from gas tax and measure A traffic safety funds. It supports our council's three-year strategic goal to maintain public infrastructure and enhance alternative modes of transportation and aligns with general plan goal 32 by using advanced technologies to enhance and improve safety and mobility. Our Arcade Cripple Creek Trail, we have a couple segments, extensions of the existing Arcade Cripple Creek Trail, the one that we just constructed and finalized in 2024, the 2.9 miles. So in this trail, Mariposa Avenue Extension will be a half a mile extension providing connection from the existing Arcade Creek Nature Preserve Trail off of Sayonara and provide connectivity to Mariposa Avenue. This project is derived from an active transportation, or ATP, grant, and then we have matching funds through Measure A Bike Ped, but also we utilize staff time in lieu of match, since we already have staff working on those projects, we're able to leverage that time as a grant match. Again, supports council's three-year strategic goal to maintain public infrastructure and aligns with general plan goal 38 to establish a system of creekside trails, passive open space, and parks for public use. Another extension of the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail project will be from Sylvan to Stock Ranch. This will provide connectivity for those that are on the east side of Sylvan to connect over to the Stock Ranch Nature Preserve. It is derived from a carbon reduction grant, again with staff in lieu time, and Measure A Traffic Safety Funds. The grants were awarded for design and right-of-way only, so we still will have to pursue grant funds for construction. Again, supports a three-year council strategic goal and aligns with general plan 38 to establish a system of creekside trails. Our Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets Phase Two, I'm assuming everybody here has traversed our Auburn Boulevard construction zone in the last eight months or so, nine months. So construction is well underway. Most of our, all of our joint trench is done, the utility companies are out there now dropping lines and pulling through conduit. At the same time, we have our general contractor, George Reed, and their subs are out there working primarily along the west side where we don't have the joint trench to try to get all those civil improvements done. And then once the utility companies are done with their work, then the contractor will jump over to the east side. So we're still on track, expect to have all work done by 2026, including road resurfacing and our gateway signalized entry. Funding was derived from multiple grants through SACOG and CTC with match and augmented funding from utility contributions. We have funds provided by SMD. We also have our stormwater utility funds and Measure A Bike Ped Funds. Again, supports council strategic goal and aligns with general plan 29 to plan, design, construct, and manage a complete streets transportation network that accommodates the needs of all mobility types, users, and ability levels. Creek Erosion and Bridge Scar Protection Project, this project helps to address erosion in the creeks and at select bridge foundations. We have reports that we receive every six months, I'll look at Daniel if that's correct, from Caltrans. They actually go out proactively and do inspections of all of our bridges and they provide information back on their findings and then we can develop maintenance and capital projects based on that. So the funding derived from stormwater utility funds as well as Measure A maintenance supports our council three-year goal and aligns with general plan 34 to preserve, protect, and enhance natural habitat areas including creek and repairing corridors, oak, woodlands, and wetlands. Facilities enhancements, maintenance, and information technology. So in this program, we have multiple projects that are listed and we have maintenance and enhancements, including IT investments to support servers and equipment replacement and also support our municipal buildings and our campuses that serve our general community. Supports a three-year strategic goal and aligns with general plan 57 to provide for the timely development, public facilities, and programs and the maintenance and service levels of these facilities and programs. I'm going to stop here. I understand that there was a question that came from Mr. Sheeler and want to address that, and that is regarding the parking lot over at the police department, in the front parking lot. So in 2014, the city had received and we constructed what we call the Green Parking Lot Demonstration Project. The parking lot to the north of the police department was all dirt, if you were here at that time, and we took it down to grade and installed low-impact development, so to help filtrate water runoff, and also installed pervious material as the asphalt. At the same time, we also did the parking lot in the north of the building, so the general public parking lot, if you own the front of the police department. Since then, that parking lot area has not held up as good as the north parking lot and we have a lot of unraveling. It's becoming, you know, crumbling into aggregate and we are not able to maintain it adequately, including striping, and it's kind of a safety hazard. So we kept this as the money to do a slurry as a placeholder for now, as we pursue options with the water board to see if we could do something to that parking lot while still keeping all that low-impact development filtration of the planter areas to still serve that purpose. And again, this also aligns with plan, oh, I already went over that, sorry. Gateway Activation Plan, this project provides funding to evaluate options, initiate preliminary engineering, and complete environmental to provide a multimodal connectivity from the terminus of the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail at Wacktel and go north up to Old Auburn Road. We held a public engagement event back in late April and we had a lot of folks that showed up. It was held up in Area 789 at the Big Oak Mobile Home Park and had a great turnout, a lot of support, so we, staff are really excited to keep the momentum going on this project. Funding is derived from a Senate Appropriations Grant and it supports council's three-year strategic goal and, as well as aligns with general plan 29, again, to plan, design, construct, and manage a complete streets transportation network that accommodates the needs of all mobility types, users, and ability levels. Our ITS, or Intelligent Transportation Systems Enhancement, this project seeks to install fiber optic and traffic signal equipment upgrades and enhancements to increase vehicle, pedestrian, ADA, and transit safety and improve traffic congestion. Basically replace a lot of our existing old copper that is not sufficient and adequate to support connectivity through all of our signals and be able to take that information and bring it back over here to City Hall to our Traffic Operations Center. We received funding through Omni Barra's office as a congressional allocation and we're hoping to be able to access those funds within the next year. We also have gas taxes, matching funds, and we're trying to leverage these funds with an additional one and a half million through RT that they've also submitted for a grant application because a project like this supports transit connectivity along our major corridors. We're hopeful that we will be able, will be successful and be able to essentially double the amount of money we have available to us. The project supports council's three-year strategic goal and aligns with general plan goal 32 by using advanced technologies to enhance and improve safety and mobility. Our Old Auburn Complete Streets Phase One, this project will provide for final design and right-of-way for a nearly two-mile stretch of the Old Auburn Corridor, which is Gary Oak to Tiara. The goal of the project is to construct a complete streets improvement for all users consistent with council-approved Old Auburn Complete Streets Plan that was adopted in 2020. Construction funds still have not been identified, unfortunately. Staff have submitted a couple times to this, different funding sources, different grant programs, however, they're very competitive in this size of a project at over $20 million. We'll still continue a little bit of work to see what other options are out there. This phase currently is funded by an ATP grant with matching funds derived from Measure A Traffic Safety. Again, supports council's three-year goals and aligns with general plan, general plan goal number 29. Our Payment Restoration, this project provides for annual pavement resurfacing throughout the city. If you are in touch with our Facebook, our social media, and everything else we've been pushing out there in the last couple of weeks, we have some incredible work that's going to be starting within the next couple of months throughout the community, but we also have Sunrise starting tonight. So if you happen to be taking Sunrise after this meeting or anywhere around the nine o'clock hour, be prepared from Greenback down to Madison, we're going to have some lane closures. This funding is derived from SB1, which is another extension of gas tax. We also have our regular gas tax, highway user tax funds, our measuring maintenance and general funds, as well as CDBG, which are programmed annually by council, and stormwater utility funds specifically to support ADA and stormwater-related improvements. Again, supports council's strategic goal and aligns with general plan 30 by promoting attractive and well-maintained roadways and sidewalks. Roseville Road, Butter Nut Drive Safety Improvements, a project will provide vehicle, bicycle, and pedestrian safety improvements over at Roseville Road in Butter Nut. If you're familiar with that area, there is not a safe left-turn pocket to get into Butter Nut, and so, as well as pedestrian connectivity or pedestrian safety to traverse, traverse from the south corner to the north corner. The funding will, is derived from a Highway Safety Improvement Grant as well as Measure A Bike Ped Safety Funds and supports the council's strategic goal as well as general plan goal number 29. And our San Juan Avenue Complete Streets Phase 1B, this project will essentially continue the Phase 1A improvements to north of Chestline and connect up to Spicer. It's about 1,000 linear feet. It doesn't seem like a long distance, but it does have a lot of nuances with all the right-of-way that we have out there to deal with. Project funding is derived from SACOG Maintenance and Modernization Grant as well as matching and augmented funding from Measure A, SB1 Local Partnership Funds, Transportation Development Bike Ped Funds, we have contributions from Sacramento RT, and participating utility companies. Supports council's strategic goal and aligns with general plan goal number 29. I am here for any questions, otherwise the motion is to move to find that the City of Citrus Heights Capital Improvement Program for fiscal years '25-'26 through '29-'30 conform with the general plan.
Do any commissioners have any questions? Anyone down here? Mr. Kinderwater?
Regina, I just wondered, how is it determined where the complete streets projects are? Does, maybe Allison would also have?
Where we, where we construct our complete streets projects? So we work with the community and we look to see where are a lot of our concerns that we have, whether it's traffic, pedestrian conflicts, lack of ADA accessibility, pedestrian accessibility. One I didn't include on here, which is in the CIP, is our Sunrise Boulevard quarter up at the north end. You probably saw Sunrise 3B. That is the last stretch that we have along Sunrise that does not have any connectivity. So those that are coming from, you know, Antelope Road area needing to get up to Roseville or back again, or even for RT, that north quadrant area does not have accessibility. So that's a project that we will be looking at with the money that we do have available from SDA to be able to at least initiate conceptual design and then make it available for competitive grants to go after for our final design, right-of-way, and construction. Other areas that we see are high-frequent areas around maybe the mall. San Juan obviously is a perfect example, there's, it lacks a lot of connectivity from the Phase 1 area that we just completed Phase 1A all the way up to, towards Greenback Lane. And so that will be another phase. We've actually secured for 1B, but we're also submitting for Phase 2, which would bring that connectivity all the way to Greenback Lane. So we just look to see where a lot of our complaints that we have, where we know that people are trying to get to, where are services lacking, and that those services could be improved if we, you know, had some complete streets components out there. Not everything requires a full sidewalk. You know, there are other ways to be able to get pedestrian and bike improvements without actually having to construct a sidewalk. You can widen asphalt berms and have some separation. It doesn't always have to just refer, you know, result in concrete.
Okay, that, I understand. I guess more specifically, I was at a creeks meeting for the Creek Corridor at Holy Family, maybe six, seven years ago, and Jeannie Bruins told me that there was a development to put in sidewalks from the McDonald's at, along Old Auburn from Sunrise to Sylvan Middle School. And at that time, my son was going to Sylvan Middle School, then he went to San Juan, but he never had that luxury of ever having a sidewalk. And then I see that down at Watchell on Old Auburn, you said it was a 20 million, greater than $20 million. I saw this afternoon that it was a $9.3 million project. So it sounds like the squeaky wheel gets these complete streets?
Not necessarily. So the 20 million is the Old Auburn, which is from Gary Oak to Tiara. The Gap Project, that one is what, nine?
Roughly.
Roughly nine, which is the connectivity from the existing, where we stopped the last trail project to go up Wacktel, connect to Old Auburn, and then connect to our existing Old Auburn Trail. That's a smaller dollar amount. And it's not necessarily the squeaky wheel by any means, it's really is what is competitive out there. As I mentioned, staff have applied multiple times for Old Auburn and unfortunately, it's just not making the cut. And we had selected that area because we thought we'd have sufficient accidents, sufficient data to be able to support the need, and that's really what the grant awarding agencies are looking for. How many people are using it? What is the likelihood that you'll increase use if you construct, you know, if you build it, they will come? But also those accidents, or if you're able to counter a lot of those accidents and those conflicts, then you rank higher. So while, you know, the squeaky wheel can get certain things like potholes filled at a local level, when you're talking about a 20, $30 million project, it's about who's got money and who's going to give it to us.
Is there anything else regarding the sidewalks from, from Sunrise to Sylvan along Old Auburn?
That, so from Tiara is actually...
I saw the Tiara...
So from Tiara to Sylvan.
Going east, yeah, I saw that today.
From Tiara to Sylvan Corners, that would be our Phase 2, and we currently do not have a project for that. We're still trying to figure out how we're going to construct Phase 1 before we really start putting Phase 2 together. We do have some smaller development projects that will be coming down Pike that will be conditioned to have to put some improvements in front of their properties. So they will be required to build, you know, some of that connectivity. But I can't say that within the next five or 10 years, we will definitely have connectivity from Sylvan Corners all the way up to Sunrise.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
I had a question, kind of along the same lines, but pertaining to San Juan. So I heard you speak at the Phase 1 from Madison and now that's coming all the way down to Spicer, but are there any plans before 30, 2030, to complete that connectivity to Greenback?
So we have submitted for funding through congressional appropriations. We submitted last year and it seemed to have been pretty strong and it was going through the budget process at the time, and then a lot of those congressional appropriations were pulled. So we've resubmitted again and we will continue to also submit to SACOG as our other projects develop. We have presented at the last council meeting regarding our STIP funds, so we will be getting probably about two and a half million in STIP, which is State Transportation Improvement Project Funding, in the next cycle, which would probably be two years from now. So we've already essentially are committing that when those funds come available, those will also be going towards San Juan.
Okay, so potentially.
Potentially. Potentially. But you know, these complete streets projects are incredibly expensive, as you can imagine. You know, Auburn Boulevard is 30 million, and that does not include your design and your right-of-way, that was another four, five million on top of that. So these projects are incredibly expensive, nothing that the city could ever bear on our own. When you look at the deferred maintenance that we have on our roads to begin with on resurfacing, you know, we're at 100 million plus for that. So then you add in all these other components of sidewalk connectivity, pedestrian crossings, those types of things, it really brings that price tag up significantly, which is why we do need to go out for grant funds.
I guess I would like to say, having put capital improvement plans together myself, I really want to compliment staff. I mean, I know it's a very broad group of people that work on various aspects of this thing, but really putting together the timelines and the potential sources of funding for all these various grants and whatever else, it's, that's, that's really quite a task. So my compliments to the staff, it's very, a job well done.
Thank you.
I guess we take a motion?
Give another question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I second Tom on that. I read the CIP document and wow, all these great projects. Regina, one surprise I had was the small potatoes for facilities enhancements. I think it was only 400,000 and, I mean...
I would like, I would like to get more money. Beggars can't be choosers. When we have 4 million a year that's going to our roads right now, kind of our focus is to, let's knock out a couple of years of our payment restoration program and then demonstrate to the public, you know, how responsible we are with our funds and then we'll go from there.
Thank you again.
I, you know, I agree on that point, when you go before council and talk about this, presumably with more of the public listening or watching, you know, really emphasize that issue about the pavement, obviously a gigantic issue in the community, and you look at, you know, look at your projections out, you've got 4 million per year, you know, and, and obviously you're multiplying that with all the various grants and whatever else. You know, make that point strong because the people are going to be really interested in that stuff. I know a lot of the other programs or other projects are really technically more complicated necessarily and really interesting from a, from an engineering and a, and a planning standpoint, but, you know, the average guy driving his car, you know, he wants to know why he's got potholes in the road, so. Okay, do I have someone to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that to find the City of Citrus Heights Capital Improvement Program for fiscal year 2025-'26 through 2029-'30 conforms with the general plan.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Flowers moved and Commissioner Van Duker seconded. I guess I see I should have done the, the public...
We'll go back.
We'll go back, she says. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Call, roll call?
You can just do a group, all in favor.
Okay. Well, when the attorney's not here. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Tom, and if you want to go back to the consent calendar and just do the same thing, ask for a motion and then they can all answer, all in favor.
Yeah, we didn't vote on the consent calendar.
For the minutes.
Okay.
Consent calendar.
Okay, so...
We moved.
You, you moved and...
Yeah, and then we just didn't vote.
Okay, okay.
But we didn't vote.
Okay.
Yeah, so we can just say...
All those in favor of approving the consent calendar?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Perfect.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next item.
Thank you, Regina, for that presentation on the CIP. It's always interesting to get into the details of those projects. While Daniel's getting set up, I wanted to introduce you to our principals, Principal Civil Engineer, Daniel Care, who's going to give us a presentation on our floodways and drainage, a very important part of the city's infrastructure, as well as when projects come before you, much of this touches those projects. So I thought it'd be a great time for us to get a lesson. We went through it the other day and it's amazing work he's got to present to you, so thank you.
Commissioners, Chair, nice to see you all again. Daniel Care, Principal Civil Engineer. It's a General Services Evening in Planning Commission, so really excited to highlight our projects. You're going to hear me mention quite often, our stormwater fund, which Regina alluded to, also funds our capital projects. On top of that, it does fund our maintenance for our creeks and waterways. So I'm here to present today, kind of, here's a rough agenda of a history of stormwater regulations and management in general, just kind of giving you a big picture of when things started coming in place, when we did start to regulate and really focus on stormwater management, what we, your city and general services staff do for creek maintenance and manages, management, as well as our storm drain pipe networks and systems as far as maintenance and management goes. Then we'll start diving closer into the development regulations, which includes the floodplain considerations and requirements from the federal government, and then our development regulations particularly focused on stormwater as that portion of the development. So here's our brief history of the stormwater regulations. Large portions of, this, this portion of Sacramento County that became City of Citrus Heights were developed in the 1950s and 60s. We do have some much older structures in our city, the 14-mile house being the most notable, built in 1849, and we do still have a few homes standing from the 1910s. In 1968, the National Flood Insurance Act was created. This was to transition the burden of flood disasters from the federal taxpayer to the actual property owner. And it actually created the, the organization, which is FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency. In 1972, we have the Federal Clean Water Act, which was the first ever development regulations for stormwater, period. In 1975, we got our first flood maps from FEMA, the very newly-created organization. In 1990, the city, or the Sacramento County and all incorporated cities received its first statewide regulation permit for any stormwater running off from our municipal system. In 1997, we became a city. In 2004, the city assumed oversight of the stormwater review and regulations for development. Up until that point, it was county staff still. In 2006 was the first county-wide stormwater quality regulations, which is different than the stormwater management, and we'll dive into that later in this presentation. In 2010, the city begins the full drainage and stormwater management utilizing our stormwater fund apportionment from the county. FEMA flood map changes approximately... FEMA flood map changes approximately every 10 years to help reassess the risk based on a changing environment, whether that be development, whether that be climate change or any other forecasted impacts that might change where the water would go in a 100-year storm or a 1% chance storm. We are engineers and we deal with probabilities. So when we say 100-year storm, that just generally means you have a 1% chance of seeing that storm. At the bottom here are some general statistics of what we do and manage as a part of your General Services Department under Director Cave. We manage all of the drainage and waterway assets and perform the development reviews for both entitlements and the construction side. We have 26-plus miles of creeks, 60 miles of open ditches, over 60 bridges, 20-plus miles of storm drain pipes, 5,000-plus inlets and over 3,000 manholes we have to manage. Staying with the theme of management, we have 86-plus miles to protect and manage. We primarily utilize our stormwater fund to do so. That stormwater fund's gathered through property taxes and development fees. Our goal through this stormwater fund is to effectively manage stormwater runoff as a resource while improving the water quality. For creeks, that means re-removal, vegetation management, slope stabilization, bridge maintenance, some of those projects you saw in our capital improvement program. For storm drains, it's the regular just pipe and inlet cleaning. We try to hit every pipe roughly three years, sometimes five years, but we do our best on rotation. We have over 750 outfalls directly into our creeks. And then we, of course, quickly respond to public service requests, localized flooding items like that. Typically, it's a clogged storm drain or pipe that we end up clearing. Here are two maps actually hanging up on the walls of my office. The map to the left is our storm drain pipe network that I've been talking about. These are what's underneath your streets. The gentleman driving down the road sees an inlet or a manhole cover, they don't realize. This is the network that we maintain, manage and model. The picture to the right, each of those blue dots are one of those direct discharge point. That means the water that flows into the inlets gets into the natural environment through one of these dots on the points. There's a lot to manage, maintain. The city does have a history of flooding. Historically, we've experienced flooding from events above and below that 100-year storm event, that 1% chance. Here's some photos that, for flooding that has occurred since cityhood, most notably in 1995 and 2005 were very severe. And then in 2012, we did have a couple of streets that were significantly inundated. Just some statistics as well, as far as floodplain and flooding in the city, what FEMA has mapped. We are all within zone AE and it is 564 acres or approximately 6% of our land is floodplain. Inside of that floodplain today, we have over 950 habitable structures. Those means dwellings, units or businesses. And this is only for the 1% chance storm. Yes, we have seen and do expect to see more significant storms than that. Now diving into a little bit more on the FEMA and flood, flood insurance programs. So the National Flood Insurance Program was created by Congress with the same act that created FEMA. It's a voluntary program that provides federally backed flood insurance to all of the residents within that community as long as that community enforces minimum regulations set by the federal government. The NFIP is often described as a three-legged stool. Floodplain management, that's where general services comes in. Flood insurance, those are those insurance providers that you love dealing with. And then risk mapping and assessment. That is the FEMA and the modeling agencies setting the targets for what those 100-year or 1% chance storms are. So in order to be a part of the National Flood Insurance Program, the city needed to adopt a floodplain ordinance. So this defines the special flood hazard areas or floodplain. The purpose of this chapter is to promote public health, safety and general welfare and minimize public and private losses due to flood conditions in specific areas. Those are those mapped areas. These flood losses are caused by the cumulative effect of obstructions in the flood hazard that increase the flood heights and velocities. Those obstructions could be trees and vegetation, which we do clear through our management. It also could be fill from development. For us being a part of, of having this ordinance and being a part of the National Flood Insurance Program, it allows our city and residents to receive federal disaster aid. We would not be eligible to receive that aid without this ordinance and complying with the program. And it also allows property owners and renters to gain that flood insurance. Once again, there are only two flood zones within our city, which is zone AE, meaning we know the limits and actual estimated elevation of the floodwaters. And, and then our, our second zone is zone X, meaning you are out or are not mapped within the floodplain. There are no, there is a mandatory flood insurance requirement based on your mortgage company's risk assessment to carry flood insurance. If you do have a home within the floodplain, if you are out, you are not mandated. But flood insurance is available to you. This is just kind of an interesting survey that FEMA completed in 2020 just to enumerate the, the, the need and the concerns from us regulators and folks who look at infrastructure. 68% of adults have set aside money for an emergency. That's fantastic. But that means one-third of adults have not. And what if something were to happen to their home or their, their families where they need to pull that extra cash? Having insurance would be certainly helpful. Also a part of that study is they found 77% of households have homeowners or renter insurance, but only 22% have flood insurance. And they are very different coverages. And that's what I'm going to cover next. So here is what is covered if you were to get a NFIP or flood insurance policy. Home insurance do not cover flood damage. And I do want to highlight that 22,000 communities in the U.S. participate in the NFIP, 6,000 do not. You are fortunate enough to live in one that does. We have approximately 950 buildings within the flood map and only 450 noted policies based on, based on the recent FEMA pool of data that I performed. So we have about 50% of our homes do not have active, within the floodplain, may not have active mortgages and are not covered by flood insurance. Here are some very useful resources if you are interested in obtaining flood insurance for yourself or want to pass that along to a friend. And always feel free to reach out to your General Services Department. We're generally friendly and happy to help. Here's a slide just outlining the benefits of having this flood insurance policy nationwide. Again, flood insurance does cover buildings outside of the floodplain and it does cover flood damages outside of the floodplain. And we felt, found that, you know, overall, having flood insurance have saved the nation as far as the federal taxpayer burden by $2.4 billion per year, amounting to over $100 billion over the last 40 years. Here's what is covered in flood insurance. Your buildings and your foundation, your plumbing, your furnitures, your garages and debris removal and some clothing and furniture. What is generally excluded from your insurance are avoidable moisture, right? You have the responsibility, if there's a flood event, to open up your house, get some fans to start drying things out. If there was avoidable moisture, you may have some issues with your flood insurance claim. Any currency, precious metals, valuable papers, property, landscaping, temporary living expenses, all of those are typically covered by your standard home insurance and not your flood insurance. And then here's some myths I hear quite often and just want to put them to bed. I hear this, you can't buy flood insurance if your property has flooded before. Not true. We advise you to protect yourself and your properties at all times. You can't buy flood insurance if you live in a high-risk flood zone. Not true. It's highly encourage you to do so. Even if my property does flood, it won't cost too much to recover. I invite you to hire an estimator to see if that fact is true or not. And then you can only buy flood insurance if you live in a floodplain. Of course, not true. We've covered that one. Homeowner's insurance policy covers flooding, so we're fine. I hope I've reassured you that is also not true here tonight. Flood insurance is only available to homeowners. False. Renters also can protect their property with flood insurance. And I don't need flood insurance because I can get disaster assistance from FEMA. Again, if you do not have flood insurance or not a part of the NFIP, you are not eligible for disaster assistance by FEMA. The city has been recently made aware of a citywide discount program that FEMA offers and we have applied and are working through the process. This is a voluntary program with added requirements and reporting to the federal government and only 1,500 communities participate. Discounts range from 5% to 45%. We're currently being ranked by FEMA and it's looking really great that we're going to see a discount of 15% next year. More to come on that. Now I'm going to switch back over to the development side and what's more of the purview of the Planning Commission. We're going to kind of do a step-through time on how the city has developed. You can see a picture here, 1937, one of our first aerial photos of the region. Most of our, most of our area is still vacant, farmland, unused. There's a little bit of activity there at the Sylvan Corners intersection. Then we jump to 1953 where we start seeing our community grow and build and, and gain its character. And then 1968 and 70, that's when we really start seeing those, the city being squared up and cul-de-sacs put in and real, real subdivisions full of hundreds of homes. Progressing through the 70s through that fashion, 1995, we're approaching buildout and nearing cityhood when folks felt we wanted to break away from the county and handle our own services. In 2009, we're practically built out and that's when the city is basically inheriting existing infrastructure from the county. And 2022, basically today, as close as I could get, a nearly built-out city. We do have some developable land and that's where part of my reviews and the planning team as we go through development. Now, on the development side of things, we look at two main areas of stormwater. We look at water quality, which is water cleanliness and making sure there's no toxic substances going in. And then we also look at what we call peak flow or the added runoff through development. I think every reasonable person can understand as you pave or add roofs to a natural area, the water's going to flow off faster and more of that water is going to come off the property because it's not going in the soil. This is a fantastic representation of that effect. And again, the, the three major characters that we look at with parcel development with, throughout the state honestly, are the peak flow runoff, which I tried to represent with that top-left picture of again, adding roofs and houses. That water's coming in more concentrated, straight into our managed pipes and directly into the creeks. Then that bottom-left picture is when a development comes in and fills. Well, if they happen to fill near a creek or within a floodplain, they're not solving the issue. They're just pushing the water onto a neighboring property owner and we want to regulate and be mindful of that. And then the picture here on the top right is our, is my water quality picture, just being mindful that everything we do, having trash scattered about, walking our dogs and not picking up after them. All of that water, when it runs off into our drains, it goes directly into our creeks untreated. The water that comes from your toilet goes to a sanitary collection system and it is treated before it's discharged into the. So we have our good friend Sammy the Salmon down there on the bottom right, reminding you that you are the solution to, to stormwater pollution and helping keep our creeks and rivers clean. As a part of all of our development regulations, we are a part of the Sacramento Stormwater Quality Partnership. We, that includes all of the cities within Sacramento County and the Sacramento County itself. We perform joint public outreach events, public cleanup events. We generate all of the standards for erosion and pollution controls. And then we do monitor and report water quality violations to the water board. We report those to the state for additional enforcement and some actions when our enforcement isn't enough. So when we look at an application for development, us engineers, we take a look at the federal requirements. We look at the state requirements. We look at our regional design standards and guidance manuals. We have a list of local city policies and ordinances that we apply. All of these are reviewed for feasibility and applicability, meaning it's possible to do so within the proposed development before it's even presented to you, planning commissioners. And those, those findings are summarized in the staff reports. And then just to finalize it all, just to assure you, we do track all of these conditions and stormwater regulations through design and ensure compliance, not only through signing the plans, but in construction. It has been built the way that it has been approved. Now I'm going to take a look really quickly at our regulations and design standards that we do apply. I'll try to do my best to keep it as light as possible. We do have the zoning code for creekside development, meaning any development site that is crossed by a water course or has floodplain must set back all buildings two and a half times the height of the stream plus 30 feet, including all of our other zoning setbacks. The, the applicant's engineer must perform a stream bed analysis for the 100-year storm to verify that FEMA provided 100-year floodplain is accurate. Elsewise, they will need to outline what that 100-year water level would be. This all sets the minimum developable area of restriction and also may require upgrades or relocating of existing facilities on a site that's looking to redevelop. Then we have our specific floodplain development regulations, which are included in our drainage and development policy as well as our floods chapter. This applies to any site within 50 feet of a special flood hazard area. So you do not have to be by a creek. If you are in a mapped AE zone, these conditions or within 50 feet of an AE zone, these conditions do apply. No new fill, no structures, no parking lots, no pools, no, no typical fencing would be allowed, those traditional wood fencing between properties. What is allowed? Minor landscaping, open rail and wrought iron fences. Again, we're trying to remove that obstruction and letting the water flow as nature intended. Small pedestrian bridges are allowed, but they are still required to get all the applicable permits from Department of Fish and Wildlife and Army Corps of Engineers. Those are allowed based on our ordinance. Every new building that is built, again, within, with a property within 50 feet, has a minimum two feet above the base flood elevation requirement. And we do require surveyors elevate, survey the foundations before the, the building goes vertical to verify that they're actually building to that required elevation. And again, that stream analysis is required and it may require upgrades to existing facilities on that property, even if they're not working in that area, depending on the type of project. So storm drain development regulations, this is for any project within the city. These are what developers are and are not allowed to do. They are not allowed to significantly alter discharge locations into the creek without proper studies, permits or map changes. They must evaluate all of the downstream pipes or waterways for impacts due to the added roofs and paving that they're going to do. They must include all water run-on. So this is surface flow and pipes in those systems, meaning if water's passing through their property before it hits the pipe, they need to count for that water in their development calculations. Channels, creeks and ditches must, must all be evaluated for 100-year flows. We have 12-inch minimum pipe sizes that must accommodate the 10% chance storm or the 10-year storm. Should fit entirely within the pipes and never pond in your gutters that you see. And they must provide easements for maintenance so our municipal staff can go and clean those pipes like we do regularly. Water quality regulations. Now we're switching over to the cleanliness side. This is mandated to us by the State of California and the Clean Water Act as well as the design standards we established as a part of that stormwater quality partnership. We look at during construction, primarily having erosion and sediment controls. So for sites greater than an acre, they actually have to fill out a larger stormwater pollution prevention plan and submit themselves to the state for additional monitoring and compliance. But every site must have best management practices implemented. And primarily what we're looking at is, is soil, soil migrating from the site into the systems, onto the street, off of a property, onto another. And then the potential toxic, toxic substances that are associated with heavy machinery and paint and things like that. We want to have proper spill prevention and mitigation techniques involved. Here's some pictures of great stormwater quality regulations during construction where we are using straw waddles or silt benches to keep that soil in place. We're putting in some temporary rock entrances and dams or covering our inlets to keep that sediment from entering the pipes and further creating an obstruction which could result in localized flooding. Post-construction water quality requirements, again, set by the partnership, is focused on just generally improving water quality in our region and removing pollutants where possible. Also mitigating some of our peak flows by installing basins. All projects are subject to the during construction activities, but only development projects greater than one acre are required to have these water quality permanent features. So there is a difference. All of these features are designed for the five-year storm. So those, those fun little planter basins with lots of bark mulch and steep slopes, those are actually for water quality. Those plants and the soil underneath those plants provide. Those plants and the soil underneath those plants provide cleaning activities as the water percolates through, it hits a perforated pipe, and then it enters our storm drain system clean, which is fantastic because it goes straight to the creeks or rivers. Every project that hits this requirement must receive a hundred credits, and there are perpetual maintenance for any private facilities installed. So those property owners can't just install it and forget about it. We do enforce that they maintain and keep these features functioning. Here are some of the concerns of materials, potential pollutants, if you will, based on the type of development. We look at these particular materials and make sure those best management practices address those. And here's some pictures, including the green parking lot and ours, police department on the top left, of different options on how they address those pollutant controls. They can be low-impact design, like our parking lot or the swale you see on the right, where the water flows naturally into a basin, the plants and soil clean it up, it enters the pipes. They can also do it mechanically, buy a big box with baffles and separators to slow down the sediment, and there are carbon filters inside of these devices that pull out the pollutants, and then eventually spills over into our drainage system. These facilities tend to need a lot more maintenance than the low-impact design ones do. And again, here are the applicability of what is and is not allowed for water quality regulations and those projects based on their various size and type. We have a ton of resources available for developers, the general public. We have recently completely revamped our storm water engineering resources pages, including this quick reference guide you see here on the left. Our storm water quality manual is an easy click away from our engineering, our general services websites. And we are looking to update our storm water quality manual as soon as we get a new permit from the state, which is imminent. I may be talking to you on that in a few years. And then please, just another public service announcement, only rain in the drain, we want to keep those turtles happy and the environment, the water clean for everybody to enjoy. Some focused resources, but of course, general services staff is always here to help whenever we can, and I'm here for any follow-up questions.
Any questions from the commissioners?
Please.
Daniel, you mentioned the storm water management and then the pipe maintenance. Is that 100% performed by Citrus Heights, or do utilities, or the state, or the county, or any other entities perform those functions?
So all of the pipes within the city are owned and maintained by the city. We do have contractors that generally do perform the service, but they are overseen by general services staff. And they are, all of those pipes on that picture are now Regina's pipes that we all work together to maintain.
I guess I was under the misunderstanding that the water purveyors or some of the utilities also chipped in, but no.
That is not true for the storm drain side of things. But we do have water districts, that is your drinking and water delivery, and then we have sewer district, which is separate from the city that handles the sewer flows.
Thank you.
I just had a clarification. I'm not familiar with outfalls. What is the, what's the definition of outfall?
Basically, a discharge or a release point from when it's in a municipal pipe into the creek. So sometimes it opens, you know, opens up into a little spillway and then a channel, that would be an outfall point. But we have quite a few connections left over from the county days that are pipes buried underground that are hanging out in the embankment of the creek.
Okay, so we have like seven-hundred-and-fifty of those little things then?
Quite a few.
Quite a few. And can you also just clarify for me, the, what delineates between a creek that's been filled in with concrete that runs like a waterway versus a natural creek? How do we define those? That make sense?
Yeah, so we tend to generally leave the natural bottom and side slope as more of a creek, waterway estuary as a term. When it's been engineered or that concrete lining has been placed to really focus on conveying the flow, right? At that point, it's not really habitat. We call those channels.
Channels, okay. And currently, how often are those channels maintained by the city?
Annually, it's certainly on our three-year target cycle, but there are certain areas where we need to get in there annually.
Annually, okay. And that would be determined by custom, residents calling in for certain matters, or what would determine whether we clean a channel annually versus every year?
So our inspection and maintenance manager, Armando Velazquez, I definitely don't want to take his thunder, he does wonderful things for our city. He manages that three-to-five-year rotation of every site. He's been here many, many years and is well aware of the sites that need more attention. And then, of course, those public calls for service, we respond to as rapidly as possible. His team is very great about clearing those areas.
I was asking because I live on one of those. And I have routinely seen or heard the vehicles coming down them to clear them, but not as often lately. And a lot of dead debris back there and trees that have probably come under some sort of pest issue, but there's a lot of debris back there. So I just wondered how often they were maintained on a minimum and whether they just required people to call and say, hey, come clean them out, or...
I mean, we certainly do our best to do our inspections as well. Please, you know, let us know about the area. But we've got that three-to-five-year target goal, and we do rotate pretty regularly. We also need to get our permits to perform our maintenance, so there's a few months out of the year where we cannot perform the creek maintenance, and that's typically our wet season. But that opened up later at the end of March, so practically April, and that's why we're really hitting the creek, work hard, and you'll be seeing that throughout the summer. We'll get as much done as we can before October.
And then I had one other just kind of odd question. After seeing your map with all the little dots on it, are there, is there a lot of pipe, piping structure underneath the city of Citrus Heights that currently has been abandoned or not used for anything at this point? And I guess the only reason I'm curious is that pose any type of sinkhole issue, or, you know, sometimes you hear...
Yeah, that's a great question. So, there are some. I don't know what would constitute a lot. I probably would not categorize it as a lot. But there is a proper way to abandon a pipe, and there are improper ways. So when we are knowledgeable about a pipe being abandoned, we ensure it's done, it's properly sealed off, the pipe's in good enough to condition to be abandoned, or it is fully collapsed and filled in before we call it abandoned. So, we do have inspection procedures and processes to make sure it's done correctly, but we are surprised almost every time we open up a street.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for this. It was very informative. Thank you, Daniel. It was excellent.
Daniel, on slide one or two, it was the source of funding for all this physical work? And something about the parcels, each parcel's taxed, or how, what's the source of funding?
Yeah, so that's our storm water general fund. And we received that apportionment from the county who collects these fees through development and property taxes.
Is that actually the storm water utility fund?
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt. And this is part of your CUDS bill. So you get your bill from county utility billing services, I think it's every two months, and it's your sewer bill. There's a storm water fee on there, too. That's what we collect. And there is not an escalator in there, so it does not go up. It's the same flat. So we're trying to do the same amount of work year over year over year in our creeks, our channels, and our storm pipes with the same amount of money now as we had ten years ago.
Thanks, Regina.
Anyone else?
Commissioner, I'd just like to take a moment, thank Daniel for this very informative presentation. I actually learned quite a bit from him, but really wanted to point out, he kind of glossed over it, but the important work that he's been doing and how it really impacts us as the resident due to that discount. So if you or your neighbor or someone acquires that flood insurance, you would get a discount because of the hard work that Daniel and the general services team does. Right now, it's like a 15% discount, which is really significant and could be higher as he continues to work. So that is a great thing that your community service, that city staff, specifically general services, providing to our community, it's a direct benefit to you. So I just wanted to acknowledge that for him.
I think the other thing, too, is that, is all these pipes are underground, and people just generally don't think about it too much in terms of, you know, cost, you know, that needs to be maintained and whatever else. You know, they're driving on the roads, and so they're complaining about the potholes, but, you know, you need to keep all this going, too, or you've got real problems. So, yes, good job, Daniel.
Well, thank you. And I have no motions for you this evening, so thanks for hearing me out.
The next item is going to be item six B, and that is selection of a vice chair.
All right, Commissioner Shashenko moved on, now living in Rialinda, so we have a vacancy. Anyone have a motion for a replacement? For the position of vice chair, really?
I move that we advance Marcel Flowers, Commissioner Flowers, to the seat of vice
I'll second. Go ahead.
All right.
All right. Any other motions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Don't I have to accept that first?
Oh, yeah.
I heard you.
No.
I heard you.
I accept.
All right, so we've got that. That was first by Van Duker, second by Sheeler. So Commissioner Flowers, thank you. You are now vice chair. And then Ally has some information she'd like to go over with you.
So on that same vein, you see we have a chair, we have a vacancy, and so at upcoming city council meeting, well, may not be the meeting, there'll be an appointment to that. He was appointed by council member...
Schaefer.
Schaefer. And so he will make a new appointment to fill that chair. So hopefully, we will have full commission here at the next, by the next meeting. So that brings me to the next meeting is scheduled for June 10th. We will have an item that night, we'll have a project that night. So just to help you with your calendar, can anticipate that June 10th meeting. And then I just wanted to follow up on one more item before you adjourn, and that is the Sayonara Project, as you, we've talked about in the past, it's been moving forward. There is a groundbreaking ceremony Monday morning at 9:00 a.m. on Sayonara Drive. Omni Raro will be there, dignitaries, along with our council members and city staff and habitat community and news media there for that special moment of groundbreaking. So if you're in the area, 9:00 a.m. Monday, please come by. We'd love to see you. Next Monday, this upcoming Monday. Applications for the first eight homes closed on Friday. I haven't got the final count of how many final applications were received, but it's somewhere over 200, and those are the ones that were screened to make sure they were complete and so forth. So those applicants will be reviewed, and the first eight will be chosen for the first phase of that project. Second phase, hopefully not too long in the distant future, will be the next eight homes, same process, new application period, new applications, that'll go through, and then the third phase will be the final 10 homes. That's all I have for you.
Very good. Well, I will call this meeting to a close at 7:03. We're adjourned.